Good morning, it's the new year, it's 10:06 in Los Angeles.
Good morning colleagues, members of the public. Today is Tuesday, January 4th, 2005. Welcome to Los Angeles City Council Meeting, the first of the new year. Wish a Happy New Year to everybody. If we can call the roll and start the meeting.
Cardinals Garcetti, Grohl, Han, Laban, Jeladlo, Miskowski, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Smith, Viregosa, Weiss, Zion, Padilla, ten members present and a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, if we can approve the minutes. Mr. Parks moves and Mr. Zion seconds.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, this being the first meeting of the month, if I can ask everybody to please stand for the salute to the flag. And Rosalyn, can I ask you to do the salute to the flag from the... We have with us today Rosalyn Potamakatin from the Thai Association, who will be speaking shortly, but first the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, you may be seated. Colleagues, our hearts break and our hearts go out to the thousands of victims of the tsunami and the natural disasters that followed in South Asia. I know the city as a whole and the city government has been very active in its response and outpouring of help and assistance, and we will be hearing more of that later on today. But we invited Rosalyn down today to make announcement about some of the relief efforts in Thailand throughout the week. We'll be hearing more in ways that the public can assist in the help in many of the ties that we have, so thank you Rosalyn, and turn it over to you.
Thank you, Councilmember Garcetti, and thank you councilmembers for inviting me to join you here this morning. As you know, a tsunami hit the Southeast Asia area on Christmas Day, or December 26th in Asia, and all of you have watched the news coverage and seen the pictures and the rising death tolls. However, although this happened in Southeast Asia, this is a global tragedy that has affected over forty countries and those who personally live here in Los Angeles. I myself have family in Phuket, Thailand, and a young brother who's currently studying over there right now, and we were unable to locate him for over six hours. We were happy to find out that he is safe, but he was supposed to be vacationing in that area, that beach that was devastated by the tsunami, so we are all very thankful. The Thai community has taken immediate action upon learning about the tsunami that hit Thailand, calling together emergency fundraisers. I've been working with the various Thai associations in the community and the Royal Our Thai restaurants have been a vital part of trying to get people to, not just Thai communities, but people from all different races to come and put money. So, we're currently in the process of getting two hundred donation boxes out to various Thai restaurants, so people can, you know, put a dollar in, because every dollar counts. We've been telling people that right now what they need the most is cash donations. So many people in the Los Angeles area have been generous in wanting to donate clothes or supplies or other emergency materials. However, we are telling the public right now that in Thailand, they do not have the capacity to receive such goods, and we ask that they please try to ask for cash donations instead. If people have been in devastated areas before, we just don't have the resources to transport the donations from Bangkok to Phuket or to the isolated areas that have been devastated. The Thai community wants to thank the city of Los Angeles and the people of the city of Los Angeles for your generous showing of concern and compassion. You know, we live right now in a time where all we saw before this was talk of the war and people dying, and it was so nice to know that out of this tragedy, we are able to see the spirit of people and how they can rise beyond thinking about themselves and reach out to people that they don't know about or who they don't know on the other side of the world and are willing to reach out and give their money and their time. And so, I want to say thank you on behalf of the Thai community to the city of Los Angeles for all that you've done and to the people of the city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Rosalyn. And again, if folks are listening on Channel 35, and we'll probably have more information tomorrow, the donations can be made payable through the Thai Association, to the Thai Association of Southern California, and sent to the Royal Thai Consulate General Care of Tsunami Relief, and that's 611 North Larchmont Boulevard, Los Angeles 90010. Royal Thai Consulate General Tsunami Relief, 611 North Larchmont Boulevard, LA 90010. Ms. Grohl?
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and I know that all of us have enormous feelings and have experienced in watching the TV in the last week and have our own personal stories. I just wanted to inform the council that I've been working with, Council President Padilla, Councilmember Garcetti, and Councilmember Labange, for a presentation to be made tomorrow by the Consul Generals of Thailand, Indonesia, and others. We've invited, along with the Red Cross, to have a presentation tomorrow to help us inform and educate our residents about what they can do to help in this tragedy. So, we will have a formal presentation tomorrow in the council chambers. So, I want to thank... Thank you for being here today, and we look forward to having a further discussion tomorrow, as well as what we can do as a city and a compassionate city. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vieragosa.
No, I just want to thank the representative for sharing that testimony with us today, and I think all of us in the last few days have just been captivated by the tremendous pain that this tsunami has brought, not just on the people of Southeast Asia, but on people all around the world. And I think, as you said, if there is ever anything positive to be gleaned from a catastrophe of this proportion, it's the support that is coming from all over the world. And later today, I'll be putting a motion for Rule 23, Rule 23 motion, to move that the Emergency Preparedness Department here in the city of Los Angeles move ahead and be instructed to provide recommendations on relief efforts, and we'll take into account your admonition that, as much as possible, those efforts should be focused around raising funds and, I would imagine, some equipment and expertise as well. So, thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, Mr. Vieragosa. And we will let the public know any new information that we have here through Channel 35 and through our council offices. Thank you. That ends our commendatory resolutions and introductions. Oh, Mr. Labange, you have more? Mr. Labange?
Mr. President, thank you, and Mr. Vieragosa, thank you. Mr. Stanley, who I spoke with last Monday and the days afterwards, and on Tuesday with the help of the Mayor's Office and the Office of Protocol, and Mr. Padilla, our president of City Council, we had a joint event of many concerts together at the Thai concert on Larchmont with the American Red Cross to get the word out right away, and it's amazing how as this event has multiplied in the days from the original announcement of the tragedy that hit South Asia to the thousands and thousands and now millions of people affected by this tragedy. But the Red Cross will be invited as well, and to join with you, Mr. Vieragosa, we're going to ask that our General Services Department survey all the surplus equipment, as well as, and I'm checking with Ms. Han and her relationship with the Port of Los Angeles, to see if there's a need, which I believe there is a need, but a proper way to survey our surplus equipment with the city of Los Angeles, our surplus vehicles, whatever can be done to assist. It's only the days, the early days of this tragedy, and it's the weeks and the months and the years, and it is something that we should all remember, because in 1994, when we were hit by an earthquake, not nearly as, in any way, the magnitude of what hit South Asia, the rallying efforts of others was so important to bring spirit to people. We also have a sister city in Jakarta, Indonesia, and working closely with them as well. So, I appreciate, all of us, what we could try to do to help others and direct people to help those, not just today and not just tomorrow, but in the weeks and the months and years ahead for what is a truly a disaster of magnitude that we in this world have never seen. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti, and thank you, Ms. Grohl, thank you, Ms. Han, and Mr. Vieragosa, as well as you, Mr. Garcetti. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange? Okay. Let us run through the agenda now, colleagues. Adam Quick?
Mr. President?
Can we run through...
Sorry. Mr. Garcetti, I'm sorry.
Oh, yes, Ms. Grohl?
Just one last thing. Rosalyn didn't get to mention and wanted me to. The Wat Thai Temple, which is in my district, is having a fundraiser on Sunday from 11:00 to 4:00. We'll have further information, location, et cetera, prior to Sunday, but it is the Sunday, so people to mark their calendars, and we'll let you know. It's near Roscoe and Coldwater there.
Okay. We'll work for folks who are watching on television, we'll work with our Information Technology Agency to make sure that there is an easy link at our lacity.org website for all of this disaster relief information.
Thank you.
Okay. Adam Quick?
Mr. President, this is a time for comments from the public on items not on council's agenda.
Okay. Now is the time for general comment. I'd like to call Walter Bechtel forward at this time. Colleagues, it's now time for general public comment.
I wanted to try to reiterate something that I had come before, I had said, I tried to explain to the council back in July of this year. There is a serious problem at the hotel I live in and of people who feel as though they have a right to eavesdrop, and I don't know how, they either use illegal wiretapping or whatever methods that they use to steal intellectual property from persons like myself. Some cases have been prosecuted in part in that regard. Cody Bluff was one of the people who was prosecuted in that regard. There were several cases filed, in the Don Henley case. It's an issue of slavery, it's an issue of extortion, and it's an intellectual, it's a case of, it's a serious case of grand larceny. Okay? I don't think that the people understand that when I ask for an X-Rail prosecution, that's a prosecution, as I understand, where the prosecutor files a civil, on behalf of the person, in a civil court, okay? I need that to be done.
Mr. President, can I ask, sir, where's your hotel?
It's the same other hotel, case number 990340. It's the Ford Hotel, it's downtown LA, it's in Mr. Vieragosa's area. I tried to talk to them already about that, but they told me that I have to talk to the Department of Corrections. I don't think they understand, I've been through all those avenues before, okay? That's the only reason that I've come here, because I've already done all the courtroom stuff. I don't think that the people understand.
Thank you, Mr. Bechtel.
It's a serious case.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Mr. Labange, did you want to add anything else? Okay. That closes our public comment for today. We can run through the regular agenda.
Next, Mr. President, our items notice for public hearings, items one through five, and the recommended action for councilors to open the hearings and continue the hearings and ordinances to January 25th.
Okay. We'll open those hearings without objection. Next items?
Next items are items for which public hearings have been held, items six through seventeen, and I believe there is a request on item number eight to continue that matter.
Yes, there's a request from CD 11 to continue until the 11th?
I request that. Continue number eight.
Okay. Until the 11th, is that the same information you have?
Thank you.
Yep, okay. Without objection, that will be continued to January 11th. Any specials, colleagues? No specials? If not, let's please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Balance of the items is passed. Next items, please?
Next items are items for which public hearings have not been held, items eighteen through twenty-five, ten votes are required for consideration, and on item number eighteen, council's action would be either to approve or disapprove only.
Okay. Does anybody move either one of those on item eighteen? Mr. Zion?
Eighteen?
Eighteen?
Special.
Okay. Any other specials? Mr. Parks?
We call eighteen special?
Yeah, that was just called special. Any other specials in those? If not, let's, Mr.?
Item fifty-four, please, please. Eleven district.
Continue fifty-four.
Right. We have that as well, request to the 11th without objection. Mr. Parks?
Fifty-one.
Fifty-one? Any other specials, colleagues?
Fifty-nine.
Fifty-nine called special by Mr. Labange?
And continue sixty-two.
Sixty-two. We continue until what date, Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange, continue till what date?
Next Wednesday.
Okay. Continue until next Wednesday, that will be the 12th. Okay? Yes, Ms. Berry?
I wanted to continue item thirty-four, please.
Okay.
For one week?
One week, till the 11th. No objection to those? Okay. For the rest of the items, we will open and close public hearings, and if there are no other specials, I'd like to take the balance of the items now. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those items are approved. Next order of business? Should we go back to the...
Going back to the items called special, item number eighteen was called special by Councilmember Zion.
Mr. Zion? We have item number eighteen. Why don't we hold that on the desk for a second? Are you ready? Okay, we'll hold that on the desk. If we can go to the next item, please.
Item fifty-one was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Mr. Parks, item fifty-one.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to make a public acknowledgement and, for assistance, we had a very tragic incident that occurred in February of this, of last year, where Dedrick Norwood was the victim of a hit-and-run traffic accident that occurred, I'm sorry, occurred in October of 2003 at the intersection of Forty-Sixth and St. Andrews. After, he was riding a motorcycle, he was run over by a car, and after a long period of trying to recover from these severe injuries, in which he was left paralyzed, he died February 26, 2004. We have a reward motion today, and that we'd like for anyone with any information regarding this to call South Traffic Detectives at 485-7336. There's a $50,000 reward, and certainly, we're doing this behalf of the family who's asking for anyone that would come forward. Very tragic incident, we just want to make it highlighted for Channel 35.
Thank you, Mr. Parks, and we'll make sure we get that on our Channel 35 screens as well with a reward motion. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this? If not, can we please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote?
Twelve ayes.
That reward motion is approved. Okay. Mr. Zion, number eighteen, if we can go back to that, and it's called special by Mr. Zion.
Thank you, Mr. President. The item that we'd like to have support is going to appear on the ballot, and what this does is bring into alignment with police and fire, members of public safety who have retired under a pension plan, who wish to return to duty have been prohibited, and we want to modify that. Prior to 1980, they could return to duty, after 1980, they can't because of the change in pension plans. This doesn't increase any cost to the city, but it simply provides the opportunity with the approval of the chief of police or the fire chief, to permit these people who wish to return to public safety, to public duty, that opportunity. So, we would ask that on this particular matter, which is Charter Amendment Number Two, that we'd support this, and we ask the voters to support this. It's going to be cost-neutral, but it will increase our ranks of firefighters and police officers, so we'd ask your support for that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zion. Anybody else wishing to be heard on that? If not, Mr. Zion has moved, do we have a second on that as well? Do we have a second on, yes, Mr. Parks? Okay. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved.
Next item, Mr. President, is item number fifty-nine, and I believe that was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Okay. Fifty-nine? I think that was Mr. Labange called fifty-nine. Mr. Labange, item fifty-nine?
Technical amendment on this item, number fifty-nine, for Woodrow Wilson Drive?
Okay.
Forty-seven fifteen. Okay, it's $4,700 for the speed humps, it's a correction in the price, and it's been circulated to the clerk.
Okay. That's been circulated?
Forty-seven fifteen is the correct price.
A little inflation on the speed humps, huh?
Yes, thank you.
All right. If we can open the roll on the item, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved as amended.
Mr. President, there is a special one that I believe is in the process of being distributed to the councilmembers. It was moved by Councilmember Weiss.
Okay. We'll wait for that to be circulated. In the meantime, should we clear the desk, do a little housekeeping?
The council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay. Let's post and refer those.
And there are excuses on the desk. Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Friday, January 28th, for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay. Mr. Cardenas is excused.
Councilmember Vieragosa requests to be excused Wednesday, January 12th, for personal business that meets council policy.
Okay. Mr. Vieragosa is excused.
Councilmember Cardenas requests to be excused Tuesday, January 11th, to leave at noon for city's business that meets council policy.
All right. He is excused as well.
And Councilmember Ledlow requests to be excused Wednesday, January 5th, for personal business that meets council policy.
All right. Mr. Ledlow is excused as well.
And that clears the desk, except for the specials.
Okay. Has special one been circulated? Do we have that? Okay. Mr. Weiss, why don't you address that?
Go ahead. You got it?
Should we have the city attorney first? Okay. Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, the Police Department has requested council to offer a reward leading to information regarding the homicide of Jai Yang. Immediate action is required to assist the community in apprehending the suspect. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 5495, 4.2, before considering the substantive motion.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney. Mr. Weiss, is there anything else you'd like to address? If not, let's open the roll on the finding, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That item is before us. Mr. Weiss, would you like to address anything? Okay. If not, let's open the roll on the item. Please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. And let's go forthwith with that. Okay? I understand there's a special two that's circulating as well?
Special three.
All right. Who is the maker of the special two?
Well...
All righty. Why don't we use this time for announcements, colleagues? Do we have any announcements today? Anybody would like to meet? Seeing none, we have two specials that we're waiting for. Mr. Labange and Mr. Vieragosa like to address the specials while we're waiting for them to be circulated. We will pause briefly then. While we're waiting, special two and special three, it gives me great joy to announce that Journey will be getting a star on the Hollywood Walk of Fame on January 21st.
Would, Mr. Garcetti? I think if it's just a little gap right now, do we have a gap right now for a little bit here?
Yeah.
No, I just was just on that, I think we should all wish the University of Southern California best wishes tonight in the Orange Bowl, as they battle the University of Oklahoma for the national title and the hard work that Coach Pete Carroll and all the people involved with the University of Southern California football team wish them well in this great game.
Thank you very much. Mr. Labange? Would you like to address the substance of your motion, or would you rather wait for it to come around? Because we can start.
Substance of my motion, if I could, if that's okay, Mr. Pliss?
Sure, that's special three, we expect?
Yeah, special three is to direct the Department of General Services, who's responsible for all surplus equipment for the city of Los Angeles, to direct that department to survey all surplus equipment, to see if there's a value that we could share this equipment in the countries of great need now due to the disaster that hit South Asia.
Okay.
That is the request, and it would be hoped that we get past that so that we can be prepared tomorrow when there's a formal presentation. The Department of General Services is responsible for all surplus equipment at this time.
Okay, why don't we bring that motion forward? I understand it's just being circulated right now. Any other announcements, colleagues, today? Okay, I believe the city attorney has it in his hands. Mr. City Attorney, if you can address the findings, please. Oh, for Mr. Vieragosa's, this will be special two.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will recite the fact as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Since the posting of today's agenda, relief efforts have grown to assist the victims of the Southeast Asian tsunami. Immediate action is required to direct the city emergency preparedness department to lend its vast experience to the relief effort. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substantive motion.
Okay, on the findings, if, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, that, Mr. Vieragosa's motion is before us.
Yes, members, I spoke to this earlier. The substance of this motion directs the emergency preparedness department with the Office of City Administrative Officer, the CAO, to be instructed to provide recommendations on relief efforts the city of Los Angeles can provide to victims in the affected areas hit by the deadly tsunamis. I think it's an important way for us to coordinate our efforts as a city family, to participate in any way that we can, to do something about the devastation and the relief that's so critical to avoiding any further catastrophes. So I would urge your eye vote.
Thank you, Mr. Vieragosa. Anybody else wishing to be heard on this item? If not, let us open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That item is approved. All right. Okay. Mr. Labange, would you like to make a verbal motion on?
Just a question on that, with the passing of that motion, what is the action that we're taking?
Can I invite Mr. Stanley to come to the table, Mr. Stanley? Let's reconsider, just to keep this kosher, let's reconsider that item. There's no objection. Okay. Mr. Stanley?
Good afternoon, Ellis Stanley, Journal Manager, Emergency Preparedness Department. Mr. Labange, obviously, we're looking at a local effort, but what you're asking, too, would necessitate that we coordinate with USAID, coordinate with some of the federal agencies, because?
Give us that whole rundown, because I think this is new, a lot of the council members are new since the last major disaster that affected us, which would be the Northridge earthquake. Now this is an international disaster. What's the protocol? Because protocol is so important in this operation.
That's correct. First of all, we have to remember there are multiple countries. This event from South Asia all the way to Africa, we had deaths. Right now, over 150,000, that will obviously increase because of the related impacts that deals with death, disease, famine, et cetera, that will occur from that. Total infrastructures are gone. I know one of the things you were asking was equipment. What we want to do is have the greatest impact when we're talking about responding. Secretary Colin Powell is there now, and they're still doing part of the survey. They've committed, I think, $350 million from the federal government. What we would do right now is coordinate with the federal, with the state, even the state of California is doing some things, so that we can maximize what we're doing, whether those is actual monies that we need, whether it is support as far as technical assistance to get over, to help with building inspections, building codes, et cetera. It does involve rattling, rattling, I guess, the resources of all of the consulates that we're working with to make sure that we're putting the resources where they can do the most good.
But who's doing, who's coordinating? That's the only thing, I want to make sure we do the right thing. I know, well, my main effort recently has just been to direct people to help the Red Cross internationally, which is responding, as the president said yesterday, directing people, if they can, to make contributions in this nature here. I just want to make sure we fall in some protocol in how we go ahead, and I know the county of Los Angeles has a strike team or disaster emergency team, so I want to just make sure we're coordinating.
Yes, we, my office would be coordinating with the appropriate agencies. Red Cross, obviously, is the one, and it was the agency of choice that we recommend that folks give resources, especially money, to. And we would be coordinating with all those entities. The thing is, you do not want to go until you have some contact on the ground at the scene, so you do not become part of the problem as there with?
Right, I think the worst thing is when we hear there's things left on docks, you know, and the ability not to get all the way.
And that happens far too often.
Miss, yeah, thank you. Ms. Skrul, tomorrow, just give us a little update, because I know you're working on one end of it, I'm working on a little end of it, but you're, because I know Mr. Stanley's going to be back here tomorrow.
Yes, I think, again, and you're right, in coordinating all of our efforts, and appreciate last week, Mr. Labange, you taking that leadership role in having a press conference with the consul generals. I think the interest we'll have tomorrow is to look at those consul generals and those countries that have been affected, and where they see some of the help they would need, as well as with the Red Cross and with our Department of Emergency Preparedness, ways in that we can be of assistance. I think in many of our constituents that we have, they're asking, where do we send the money? I think the one clear message we have received from all of the political leaders and the relief organizations is that financial assistance is the greatest need, that that will allow them to purchase those kinds of resources, whether it be food or clothing themselves, and that we don't want to stop the relief from getting there with donated goods that may or may not, particularly food or other items that are donated, so that any, and any little bit helps. So it's my hope tomorrow, and Mr. Labange, that with speakers from the various consul generals, as well as having you present, Ellis, tomorrow, and the Red Cross, that we'd have the opportunity to have the discussion and provide an array of opportunities for our constituents to see where they can be most helpful, and if there are city resources. We have, obviously, in the past, sent our fire and police department and other engineers, individuals who have built buildings, rebuilt buildings to sustain earthquakes, obviously not necessarily a tsunami, but I think that would be of great assistance to utilize the expertise and knowledge of our city families. So it'd be, I think, in the same vein, we would ask you to come back to us with a proposal or plan, and working with our city departments, on where we can be most helpful as a city, in addition to asking our constituents to contribute in a compassionate way.
Not a problem.
Okay, thank you. Let us vote on it, since we reconsidered it again, if we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is reaffirmed and reapproved. Next special, Mr. Labange's motion, special three, if we can address the findings, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President, the findings are similar to those of the previous motion. The immediate action is required in this one to get the Department General Services to survey the city's current inventory of surplus vehicles to assist in the effort.
Okay, Mr. Labange? Before you address that, let's just make a vote on the findings. If you can open the roll on the findings, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Items before us, Mr. Labange.
Thank you, members. This would be a request that we ask our general services to survey all our surplus vehicles, whether they're tractors, whether there's tools, and to see out of that survey, they could come back to us through the proper protocols in the future, that we could donate them to an impacted area devastated by the tsunamis. The city of Los Angeles has thousands of vehicles, which we sell at auction. There would be a cost to us, but that cost, I think, would be greatly served by the help that we could give somewhere else, that if a vehicle, whether it's a former police car or whether it's a Bureau of Street Services, dump truck, whatever is a surplus vehicle for the city, an ambulance, an old fire truck, it's horrific to look at the video, to see how they moved the water, the most powerful thing. I don't know if water is more powerful than the actual movement of the earth, but the water is so powerful, how it moved trains, how it moved rails, buildings, et cetera. So this would direct the Department of General Services to survey and report back to council on this. And also, I must add to my motion that this pursuant, provided in Section 5494.2B, parentheses two of the Government Code, pursuant to Rule 23 and Rules of the City Council, that need is to take immediate action on this matter, and that in need for the action came to the attention of the city councils subsequent to the posting of today's agenda for the legal aspect of the motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. We can open the roll on the item, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That item is approved. We'll go forthwith on all of those specials. And six and eighteen, we will also direct to go forthwith as well. Okay, Madam Clerk, next order of business?
I believe that this is clear, Mr. President.
Okay, we've cleared the desk, colleagues. Again, I will ask if anybody has any announcements. Seeing none, oh, you have announcement, Ms. Berry?
Yeah, I do have one announcement. This is for the Save the Date Diabetes Awareness Conference at the Los Angeles Convention Center on March 3rd through the 4th. This conference will cover diabetes awareness, prevention, screening, and diagnosis, treatment, and intervention, and is open to anyone who is interested in this topic. And if you are interested, please contact healthy African-American families at 323-292-2002 or www.haaf2.org.
Just because it never hurts to remind everybody of the great challenge tonight for the University of Southern California at the Orange Bowl, and their game against Oklahoma for the national championship of football. We wish Coach Carroll and everybody well in their efforts for a great game and a victory over Oklahoma.
Thank you very much. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not, can I please ask everybody in chambers to rise for adjourning motions? Adjourning motions, colleagues. Ms. Hahn?
Thank you, President. I know we were saddened to, we've lost a couple of congress members. I think Jan was going to do the one for Shirley Chisholm, but it was really sad to learn that Bob Matsui passed away recently, just a great public servant who spent time in internment camp for Japanese-Americans as an infant during World War II, and went on to serve in Congress 26 years, just passed away Saturday night. President Bush, I thought, had a great statement. He called Matsui "a dedicated public servant and a good and decent man who served with distinguished in Congress." He became, Matsui became an attorney, and he started out as a Sacramento city council member in 1971, before winning election solidly in the, as a Democrat in the 5th congressional district in 1978. He was just re-elected to his 14th term, and he leaves behind his wife Doris and a son, Brian. We will really miss Bob's incredible legacy in Congress.
Thank you. On Mr. Matsui, Mr. Labange?
Yeah, just all members, obviously, on Matsui, but a great friend of California, what a, and what a great testament to a man whose family was interned, yet he wrote the legislation that changed the thinking and tried to right a terrible wrong which never could be righted of internment of the Japanese-Americans in that time of, period of our country. But a great friend of California and a true leader, and as Jan has mentioned, a former council member from the city of Sacramento. Robert Matsui was a great American.
Mr. Hayes?
I'd like to add that, also adjourn in his honor, former LA Deputy Mayor Manuel Valencia served as his first chief of staff when he first was elected, who's also the father of Monica Valencia, who works on my staff, so I want to recognize him. He still has a great connection with the city, and we're going to miss him.
Are there adjourning motions? Mr. Labange?
Mr. Valencia, I'm sorry, you mentioned, Ross passed?
No. Monica Valencia is the daughter of Manuel Valencia, who was congressman's first chief of staff.
I see, I see, thank you.
Mr. Parks?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a couple of them. First of all, I'd like to adjourn in memory of Cleo Barber, the mother of police officer Rosalynn Imes Curry from the Employee Assistance Unit. Ms. Barber passed away Saturday, December 11th. Funeral services were held at Inglewood Park Cemetery Saturday, December 18th. She survived by her two daughters and three sons and a host of relatives. Many of you have attended LAPD functions, and Rosalynn is one of the primary singers of this national anthem. Did that already? Okay. The next one, retired chief of police from San Leandro, Tom Rogers, passed away Sunday, December 12th. Started his career at Oakland, California in 1973, left the department as a deputy chief to become the chief of San Leandro, and will be missed by many. Also, we have a personal adjournment, family of Noel Much Legislative Deputy Cairo Salvatara passed away peacefully December 27th at his home in Carlsbad, surrounded by his family, after a brief but valiant battle with cancer. He was 57 years old. His premature death was a tremendous loss to his entire family. He was born in Panama in 1947 to Louis and Thelma Salvatara. He lived with his parents in Nicaragua until his family immigrated to the United States in '58. Received his medical degree at UCLA, practiced medicine, an anesthesiologist at Tri-City Medical Center, starting in 1982. During that time, he met his wife, and they married in 1987. He was very devoted to his profession. He had a memorial mass at St. Patrick's Church in Carlsbad at Saturday, January 8th. He had a memorial mass at St. Patrick's Church in Carlsbad at Saturday, January the 8th, followed by celebration of his life at the parish center. There's a private internment in lieu of flowers, a family request, the donations we made to, in Cairo's name, to either the Cystic Fibrosis at 9820 Willow Creek Road in San Diego, or the Tri-City Hospital Foundation to the Cairo Salvatara Memorial Fund at 4002 Vista Way Oceanside.
Thank you very much, Mr. Parks. Ms. Perry?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I'd like to adjourn in memory, and I think all of you will want to join me, of Shirley Chisholm, the former Brooklyn Congresswoman who died Saturday at the age of 80. She was more than just the first African-American woman elected to Congress and the first African-American major presidential candidate for the Democratic nomination. She was a role model and a trailblazer who was outspoken and would never allow others to push her to the side. Her fiery passion made her someone to be reckoned with, and I was looking for something unique or unusual to say about her since I know so many people will say so many amazing things, so this is an interesting little fact. On arriving to Congress, she found herself assigned to the Agriculture Committee. As a representative for Brooklyn, she refused her assignment, which was a major break in protocol. She apparently asked mockingly if she had been picked to represent the tree that grew in Brooklyn. And, you know, it's the simple actions that we take that can send such strong messages. As a result, she got a much more prestigious committee assignment and stayed in Congress for seven terms and retired during the Reagan administration. She stuck to her values and was known for her staunch opposition to all military appropriations and was a strong advocate on behalf of social services and funding them. She also demonstrated a pragmatism that transcended ideology and partisanship. Her 1972 presidential candidacy was symbolic, but she did garner 157 Democratic delegates and won the admiration of millions. Even when they didn't agree with the thing she stood for, they still admired her. Asked once how she wanted to be remembered, she replied, "I'd like them to say that Shirley Chisholm had guts." And I just have one more, and I think we'll all...
Let's make all members for that.
I'd like to adjourn in the memory of a woman I knew and I know her entire family as their constituents in the 9th district, but I also want to say that they're friends. She was a very special lady, and she died at the age of 101. Her name was Haru Hashimoto. And until very recently, I'd say in the last year, when she broke her hip, she was working in her family store three days a week. It's called Mikawaya in Little Tokyo, and I know many of you have enjoyed mochi ice cream. She arrived in San Francisco on January the 10th, 1923, in a 500-passenger boat. She quickly made her way to Little Tokyo because she said it was as close to home as one could get. She said that living in Little Tokyo made it easier for her to adapt to the Los Angeles culture and lifestyle. She immediately began working at her uncle's store, Mikawaya, which later became her store. When asked about her memories of Los Angeles, Haru fondly recounted the red street car that traveled from San Pedro to Long Beach and when City Hall was the tallest building in Los Angeles. When asked the secret of her long, successful life, she responded that it was staying involved and always taking the time to get to know people. I was fortunate enough to be at a special lunch in honor of her and her 100th birthday, and I believe at her 99th birthday as well. And she didn't speak very much English, but I always felt that I had great conversations with her, I think because we just communicated on that level as she did with most people. But in my observation, when the family showed pictures of her as a young woman and she smiled and nodded her head and she laughed, she always looked forward, she seemed to never look back, she seemed to enjoy her life to the fullest, but more than that, she just liked getting out and helping people. And I guess if there is a secret to be known, it was that, and I'd like to offer my condolences to her family. Many of you know Frances Hashimoto and her husband Joel Freeman, but to give my condolences to her entire family and say hers was a life well-lived and you were all very fortunate to have her as long as you did, and I know that her impact is felt far beyond Little Tokyo, and I will always remember her with great fondness. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Zine?
Mr. President, I have three adjourning motions. The first one, Scott Allen Thusen, passed away November 23rd. Scott Allen Thusen, 26 years of age, son of Paul Thusen, Bureau of Street supervisor. Scott was born May 3rd, 1978, senior at Kennedy High School in Grand Rapids Hills, attended Valley College where he played football for one season. He loved to cook and learned a lot working at Mama Lucia's Restaurant, helped his brother in different parts of construction work and was just learning the tile and marble trade. His death leaves an empty spot in many hearts and will be missed dearly. He's survived by his wife Michelle, daughter Isabel, his parents Paul and Kay Thusen, his brother Eric, Robbie and Danny, and his sister Stacy and grandmother Virginia. May Scott Allen Thusen rest in peace. My next adjourning motion is for Angel Mochianian. Angel passed away December 13th, mother of Marty Mochianian, member of the Resita Chamber of, was born March 24th, 1924, in Aleppo, Syria. In 1979, Angel moved to the United States to unite with her eldest son Marty. Angel's dream was to bring her entire family to America for a great future. In 1993, Angel's dream was finally accomplished when she was able to sit at a table, enjoy dinner with all of her children. Unfortunately, her dream did not last long. In 1994, she was diagnosed with Alzheimer's disease. She lived her life for her children and therefore she will always be remembered and loved as a proud and devoted mother. She survived by six children, Marty, Kevin, Sarkis, Marie, Simon and Jack. May she rest in peace. And my final adjourning motion is for Maddie Lou Darling, passed away December 20th. Maddie Lou Darling, resident of Canoga Park, passed away peacefully at her home after a link Leonis. Born in Texas, February 9th, 1930, she and her family moved to Venice, California in 1935, attended Venice High School where she met and fell in love with her husband Ed Darling. They were married on November 16th, 1945. Maddie and Ed moved to Canoga Park in 1954, bought their home in which they raised their family, spent her time being a great mother and grandmother and wonderful wife. She enjoyed taking care of her home, trying new arts and craft and developing her talents as a watercolor artist. She was loved by her family and will be greatly missed. Survived by her husband Ed Darling, husband of 57 years, six children, Deborah, Bruce, Tom, Jim, Laura and Cheyenne, 10 grandchildren, three great-grandchildren and her sister, her sister, Cloma Pfeiffer. May Maddie Lou Darling rest in peace.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. Colleagues, I too was saddened to hear about two great public figures with Bob Matsui and Shirley Chisholm's passing. Two other public figures passed during our break, two great New Yorkers, Jerry Orbach, who for 12 years played Detective Briscoe on Law &amp; Order, but for many years before that had a career on and off Broadway and a number of movies as a very versatile actor, movies like Dirty Dancing, a number of plays, most notably A Fantastics on Broadway. He died of prostate cancer, unfortunately, and is survived by his wife Elaine Consilla, his sons Chris and Tony. A day later, on December 29th, Susan Sontag, one of the great intellectual forces of the last century, passed away as well, also of cancer. She was born 1933, also in New York, daughter of a fur trader and a writer who took her attention, brought her attention to everything from cinema to photography, race, gender, philosophy, and somebody who was probably one of the most gifted writers of her generation. She passed away and is survived by her son. And then a more private adjourning, but one that you may have read about in the Los Angeles Times, a friend of mine, who was a classmate of mine in junior high in high school, Orlanda Ambrose, and her mother Beulah Ambrose died in Sri Lanka in the tsunami. Orlanda was 33. She was a teacher here at Walgrove Elementary School in Mar Vista. Her parents are from Northridge, and I assume that Mr. Smith and also Ms. Misakowski, because of the Walgrove Elementary School, would like to join me in this. She was a remarkable person. I knew her from junior high in high school. I know her classmates from Merman Elementary School have been thinking about her, her classmates at Westlake Junior High in High School. Somebody who was a gifted violinist and somebody who I remember very poignantly from when another one of our friends who was from, of Sri Lankan heritage, Mike Wignis-Warn, passed away too young in a car accident in high school. How lovingly she played at his tribute. She taught at Walgrove Elementary School and started an organization called Strings by the Sea, in which she sought to bring violin playing to young children here in Los Angeles who would never be exposed to music or to classical music education, and it was a very successful enterprise with Angelinos opening up their pocketbooks, giving all sorts of instruments, and she played here with them at our music center. She decided to take a two-year leave from her teaching job to go back to, to go to Sri Lanka where her parents were from, in order to bring that Strings by the Sea vision to the children of Sri Lanka. Her parents, Northridge obstetrician, Anton Ambrose and her mother Beulah Ambrose, who was a gifted concert pianist, decided to support her in that, both financially and emotionally, and they were visiting Orlanda to listen to the concert that she had prepared of all the kids. We weren't sure if that concert ever went off, the main one we don't think did, but there were a couple performances I read about that were in local Sri Lankan papers that had been performed just before. The tsunami struck, hitting her father, her mother and herself. Her father was able to hold on to a tree, but both Orlanda and Beulah were killed in the tsunami. Beulah was aged 61. She worked with her husband also as an office manager and taught piano. She was a fellow of the Trinity College of Music in London, and she would make the trip to Walgrove frequently to accompany her daughter and her violinist class. When her son Cezanne, who's 31, played in rock bands, Beulah became a fan of that music too. They were real pillars of the Sri Lankan community here in Los Angeles, and they will be greatly missed. Anton Ambrose and their son Cezanne survived them, and we will be letting you know for Angelinos who would like to help continue Orlanda's work in the public schools, ways that they can help. May they rest in peace. Mr. Labonde?
Yeah, Mr. President, unfortunately, I wanted to continue on just a few others, if you would, and God bless those people, and I'd like to also ask that for each of the consulates, that this council adjourn in memory of the victims of the tsunami, and that we send the appropriate document done by the city clerk to their offices, that we stand in memory of all of the victims of this tragedy that it affected this time. And I think as you so eloquently spoke of your friend and the tragedy and just the horror of it, but I think it would be important that we adjourn for all the victims of this tragedy on this day. And also, members, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Lane, who was a Los Angeles resident for many years, lived to be 90 years old, was born in San Francisco, went to Polytechnic High School during the war, during World War II. He trained people at Alcatraz for the Red Cross to be good nurses. He came to Los Angeles, was in the fashion business and insurance business and marketing business. He was a lover of golf and a, and a great grandfather. I ask that we adjourn in memory of Jack Lane. Also, members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Reggie White, the great Philadelphia Eagle and Green Bay Packer, future Hall of Famer, who once made a horrible speech about people but later apologized for hurting people's feelings as he had the wrong impression. He was a man of faith, a tremendous athlete, but a man of faith, an All-American from the University of Tennessee. I ask we adjourn in memory of Reggie White. And finally, I ask we adjourn in memory of William Boyett, who was born in Texas but raised here in Los Angeles, went to Dorsey High School, was one of the great actors in the Jack Webstock, where he was in Adam 12 and also in Dragon, and also was very famous for being the partner for Roderick Crawford at Highway Patrol. He was a character actor, a very wonderful man, married for 48 years and two children. I ask we adjourn in memory of William Boyett, a great character actor here in Los Angeles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Any other adjourning motions, colleagues? If not, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you, colleagues. This meeting is adjourned.
This meeting is adjourned.[265.64]